Welcome everyone to this evening's Tuesday night, August 28th recreation meeting for the City Daily City. Just a little comment here for those wishing to address the city, the Recreation Commission on any item on the agenda or under public appearance or oral communications. Please complete a speaker card located at the entrance of the City Council chambers and submit to staff as early in the meeting as possible. Also persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the Department of Library and Recreation Services as soon as possible prior to the meeting. Okay? And I'd like to also ask everyone to rise for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay. May I have the roll call please?
Roll call. Commissioner Landos.
Present.
Commissioner Luna.
Present.
Chair Pastor.
Here, thank you.
Vice Chair Sisson, not here at the moment.
Okay. May I have the approval of the agenda please?
I motion to approve the agenda.
My second.
Okay, those in favor of approving this evening's agenda do say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the approval of our last meeting's minutes. Do you have a motion to approve those?
Motion approved.
My second.
All right, those in favor of the last minutes do say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And moving on to our Director's Report.
Good evening Chair Pastor, members of the Recreation Commission. It is my great pleasure this evening to introduce Mr. Brian Gally, President of the Daily City Dolphins thing. Come on, he's gonna give us an update. Some of you have been on the commission for a few years and we haven't gotten an update for the Dolphins recently, so this is a perfect opportunity to catch up with what the Dolphins are doing and what they have coming up on the horizon. Take it away, Mr. Gally.
Welcome Brian.
Thank you for your attendance. I quickly need to apologize, put an apology for the no-show back in June, it was unintended but it happened, but I put an apology for that. I'd also like to say thank you for bringing us back. Brian Gally, President of the Daily City Dolphins, this is the head coach Mauricio Palms. Mauricio will have a chance to speak a little bit with some ideas of...
As we go into the new, the swim year for the Daily City Dolphin in terms of what, some of the things we see that could be beneficial for the team and Geamona as well. Before, before we get there, like I mentioned, we are getting into the new season, 2019 swim season and, you know, a big reason why we're here right now is basically to show our presence, okay? We feel, the board and I feel that the past, say, two years, ever since I've been on the board and prior to that, I've been spent restructuring the organization. It's been a tumultuous last two years. Not, I mean Mauricio, Mauricio's been with us for a year, a year and a half, so we were fortunate to be able to find him when we did. Prior to that, it was very tumultuous and it was, we were, we were searching for ways to find coaching and sort of rebuild the foundation because we had gone through a lot. So what I'm getting at is, is as throughout all of this and even during the beginning of his, his stages, we had to push a lot of things aside that, you know, that two years ago we wanted to jump right into and do. There's, there's amendments that need to happen to the handbook, et cetera, et cetera, things that take a lot of time that we had to push aside because we were constantly searching for coaching. And so, and another thing, one, another thing that we really wanted to do was, was have more presence in the city as an, as an organization. So, and that would be in the term, you know, in the form of volunteering or just getting out and doing things. So two objectives that I wanted to bring to you was, one, which I'll talk about, is that presence. The presence that we sort of pushed aside and, and had to neglect as we were actively seeking, you know, strong coaching and coaching staff. Second, the second will be some proposals that we feel that the coach and the board have talked about, that we feel would be beneficial for the Recreation Department. Now whether or not that flies, we're gonna find out, but that's what we'd like to give to you and Mauricio's gonna bring those up as, when he has a chance, as soon as I can get my, get through my spiel. So, so let's, to move on to the first objective, you know, we've got some things on the table right now. As we, as we're looking into 2019, we've got, you know, we've got the holidays coming up and we've got volunteer, smaller volunteer things that we could become a part of, but we want, we actually need a little help in terms of finding, finding those opportunities. There's donations, there's back to school that we actually missed, you know, giving backpacks to, to schools, but as the holidays come around, I think there's more opportunity to get out and sort of help the community in ways. Smaller things that we used to do with the, the board prior to when I was on it, there were, you know, there were board members that had connections around town, they fell off, and so we sort of lost those connections. We lost those connections, you know, because those people left, but also just because we sort of were in a different mindset in terms of, in terms of getting the organization back up and running. So I'm asking for, I guess, resources to, to sort of, to find some of those volunteer, volunteer, volunteering options and ways that we can sort of make ourselves, you know, citywide, a presence citywide. That would sort of help out and get the kids' minds off just being in the pool and just sort of help out the city as well. I do have a consent in with Project Greenspace. Steven Stolti, you may know him, he's a sustainability coordinator in Daily City. So he's got Project Greenspace who have a partnership with an Arbor, the West Coast Arborists, and so they've been, they've been given a grant and they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna get a bundle of 400 trees or something like that to where they'll be, you know, they need help planning these all over Daily City. And so we've, I've given him our consent in order to help him out. Problem with that is that it doesn't start until the spring of 2019. So, you know, you know, we have that going, but we would like sort of, we would like to jump into other opportunities. And in my, in my experience, being on the team and being on the board, it's not, it's not the easiest thing to find those opportunities. But it's something that, again, now that we're out of sort of that, we're out of the box of trying to reorganize the organization, restructure, we're solid on coaching, the coaching staff, we're feeling, we're feeling, we're feeling very positive about that. We're, you know, it's, it's sort of time to move forward and get into those things that we, we didn't sort of focus on, so we're hoping that moving forward, we can do that. And so that sort of ends that section. The next, you know, I'd like to introduce Mauricio, bring him up so he can talk about some things that we've, the board and, and the coach, you know, we've been going over in terms of what we could bring to the Recreation Department, Daily City, to provide possibly some, some extra revenue for you guys, so. Head Coach Mauricio.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening everyone. Thanks for having me. Brief background, I'll just be brief. Coach Mauricio, I've been a coach for, it's my ninth year coaching, about a year and a month with Daily City. Before that, I worked at a different pool in San Francisco. And there I started as just some guy teaching lessons to kids, like one hour a week, and then it became like lifeguarding, coaching adult masters, helping restructure their lesson programs in San Francisco. And then I stumbled upon here, Daily City, last year, 2017, in July actually. Beginning, beginning with a team, the team was about 60 members, 60 or so members, and my goal was to, you know, bring that up. So right now we're about 90, pushing to about 100. So that's, then my end goal was to raise more members. And the other goal was also to get kids to really love the sport, because swimming, it's not just splashing around, you know, you have to dedicate yourself at practice and then race and compete. So that was another goal as well. This past year, I've had a lot of kids going to swim meets, competitions, championships, and really putting themselves out there as well. And even this summer, I invited a lot of these kids to join me in the SF Bay. A lot of parents thought I was crazy, but the kids tried it, they had fun, and hope maybe next year they can join me in a, doing alga dress swim, who knows? Just getting like, just kids involved, that's it, just having them love the sport and just being together. That's my job empowerment, because at night I work as a coach, during the day I work as a school counselor at a school. So all that is relevant because it's all putting community, that's main focus that I wanted to put on for the team, just like how I work at, when I work at a school. So in this case, I thought, you know, we're doing open water swimming, we're doing competitions, but what else can we do? We have Daily City in our name, Daily City Dolphins. What have we done, what can we do for the city? You know, these are, a lot of kids are from Daily City, like what can they do for the city? So that's what I was thinking about, but I also had other ideas like, you know, what, because this is just me from like a aquatics point of view, what more can we give to like Geamona, like for the community? I thought of, you know, an adult masters program, I know that for sure. A pool, the pool I worked at in San Francisco, they got rid of all their adult programs. There are a lot of adults who want like a place to swim, and I think this is the closest place honestly, Geamona, for them to come, that's one example. I'm in touch with a lot of coaches from the Bay Area, a lot of them want to find a pool, indoor pool, actually very specific, an indoor pool to host meets, so that's good revenue. So I've talked, you know, we have a pool in Daily City, that's one option as well. And there's a third option too, let's see, masters, hosting meets, clinics, a lot of Olympians or just people from outside the Bay Area, they want to host like aquatics clinics for swimmers, for anyone interested at pools, they're trying to find pool sites, pool times, prime time here in the Bay Area. That's another way to grab people's attention, just saying, hey, there's a pool here in Daily City, you can come here. People from all around the city or from outside can also come and just explore and just see, oh, cool, there's a pool here, I didn't know that. I've, I've told people about the pool before, they said, there's a pool in Daily City, where? And like, I just had to explain where it is, oh, okay. So like, it's just bringing more attention to the pool, it's almost like free advertisement, free. Yeah, and that's basically, so I just have all these ideas just to, you know, bring DCD out, but also to promote Geamona as well, as a community.
Right, great. Thank you Mauricio.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we are, you know, a lot of this will help, we believe, help sort of strengthen the, the communication and the relationship that we have with, with the Recreation Department. Right now, I see, I see Chris and I see Romeo every once in a while, but it's, it's usually Chris, and it's usually, it's usually like, he's telling us to do something, we're telling him to do something, and, and that's fine, it gets done, we have no problem with that. But what we want to do is, we want to strengthen that relationship and that communication, just so that, I mean, in a sense, we are tenants, that's all we are. But it's like, to us, it's a little bit more than that, it's like, it's like we care about facility, and we want, we, we want growth and expansion, and we want people to be happy, and we want everybody to be able to, you know, to utilize the pool, because it's a great pool, there's a lot of people that are talking about that pool. And so we want to be able to, you know, keep it.
Great.
Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you Brian.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Before Mr. Gally walks away, let...
Any questions?
I want to follow up a little bit because we've talked about the desire to get more involved in the community, I think it's great that you're involved in Project Greenspace, but there's plenty of opportunity between now and spring. And just off the top of my head, the big California Coastal Cleanup is coming up on September 15th. A lot of Daily City youth get involved in that, and they meet on Olympic Way and hike down to Thornton Beach. Every year, they pick up a lot of garbage and I'm sure they could use help. If you just Google California Coastal Cleanup, there's a, you can sign up online, I'm pretty sure the Daily City site is in there. I don't want to speak on Romeo's behalf, but I know Haunted Pool is coming up, and there's, we do that at Geamona Pool.
What is it?
What is it?
What is it called?
The Haunted Pool.
Oh, haunted, I'm sorry.
And I don't know if, if some of the Dolphins have been involved in the past, but it's a very labor intensive operation, and I'm sure there's opportunities there.
Sure. I recall that, a couple years ago. Okay.
And then, you know, maybe even some of our events that are coming up at the senior center, the Fall Festival is coming up, it's actually, Make a Difference Day is usually the fourth Saturday in October, I haven't heard what plans are in store for that, but our own Fall Festival is on October 7th, and we serve about 300 seniors a pancake breakfast a day. And I know we get a lot of volunteers from Jefferson High School, but I'm sure there's room if some of the Dolphins want to join. And maybe, maybe our big cultural event, so we got Latino Heritage Month, that'll be taking place here in a couple weeks. It's on the same day as the Coastal Cleanup, but it'll be out here at City Hall, and I know we probably use a couple extra hands, moving stuff, picking stuff up, that kind of thing. And then also our, our big event, we also have a volunteer sign up already online for Casaya Honsaw Daily City, and refresh my memory, that sign up, there's a link on our website?
There is a link on our website.
And it goes to...
It's, just go to dailycity.org/casaya.
Which is easy to spell. Sign up genius is what I was looking for. Yeah, you can, you can register for that one online as well.
Is that, okay.
But I'll go ahead and send it to you.
Is that a Filipino thing, or?
Yes it is.
Or is it mixed? Okay, it's Filipino?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a community event. It's a community event that celebrates Filipino heritage and history.
Okay, excellent, yeah, no, that's exactly...
Anyway, that's just off the top of my head, but it's definitely an opportunity.
Any resources, you know, are gonna help out for us to sort of do what we're trying to do here. Are there any questions that, that I can answer?
Well, first of all, thank you for coming over here to kind of introduce yourselves to the commission, because, as you know, DCD Dolphins is kind of like synonymous with Daily City in terms of the name and association, so it goes back a long, long.
Sure.
And it's good to know that there's new invigorating folks coming forward and, and keeping the name alive.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's helped a lot of kids to learn how to swim, and especially when it comes around summertime when folks are around pools and raising awareness of youngsters around pools when parents are off barbecuing, so. It, so thank you for keeping the program going, and I know that there's a, a long list of folks that have supported the Daily City Dolphins, that are names that you see on your roster list, that are, are glad that the program is still going along, so thank you, thank you Mauricio. Thank you Brian.
You're welcome, yeah, for sure. Thanks you guys.
Maybe there's an opportunity to promote your upcoming meets, two coming up.
We have, sure, December 8th and 9th, one meet. It's about all we can hold down. But EPC is our, we're hosting our home meet, annual Daily City Dolphins meet, and both days, Saturday, Sunday, it'll be an all-day event. Last year was huge, and we had a lot of, we had a lot of swimmers that showed up, and that was partly because we now have Coach Mauricio, so everybody wanted to be there. And so, it's, it's, that, that takes some work, so that's why we're only probably doing one. We tried to do a second one in March, but Pacific Swimming, the way that they, the way that they set up their schedule, it's, it was just a bad weekend, nobody was around, so. Anyway, December 8th and 9th, hopefully Mauricio will be there, I think Ray's gonna be there, so.
What time is it there? What time is it?
They usually, the swimming usually starts around nine o'clock, nine to three, both days.
Great.
Okay. Thanks you guys.
Thanks again. Moving on to item three on the Director's Report, the Aquatic Volunteen Programs.
Yes, we're staying with the swimming theme this evening, and Romeo Benson is gonna give us an overview of the aquatics program, volunteer program. Take it away Romeo.
Alright, so today, good afternoon, Commission. Today I will be talking about the Aquatic Volunteer Programs for teams, coincidentally, now I need to talk to Brian over here to see what we could come up with. But at Geamona, we provide a variety of programs for all ages, from children to active adults. We provide lap swim, rec swim, lessons, special events, and a after-school swim club. Though we serve all ages, what happens to, what happens to our tweens or our teens after lessons, they pass, and where do they move forward? Whether it be DCD, or they go into lap swim, we still provide other programs, and those programs are swim aid, guard start, after-school, and the swim club. When we say after-school swim club, it's more for the volunteers. This continues their engagement in aquatics, their love for aquatics, and so forth. So our swim aid program, so currently it's available weekends throughout the school year. Through summer, it is offered on the daily. We have weekday lessons, they're usually there. Prerequisites are sea, sea lines or above, and so basically throughout the, throughout the lessons, they assist the instructors. The instructors teach them how to, the drills, exercises, and so forth. In the long run, basically, what we're doing is, we're trying to help them get a better understanding of swimming, like learning how, how to develop their own skill levels also. And, you know, at the same time, they have the ability to learn how to work better with staff members along with the students. By the way, they do get community service hours, and that's how they, they are recognized, they wear blue rash guards. That's how they are identified compared to the staff members, where the staff members are wearing red. For guard start, now our guard start program is available once, once every spring, and that's during our, our school district spring break, and we offer it during summer four times. It goes from eight to five o'clock every day. Prerequisites are sea lines and above, and ages are 11 to 14. And for this program, what we do is, we teach thus the children, in this case tweens, how we prep them for lifeguarding. So they learn the basic skills, like CPR first aid, they learn how to do rescues also. By the time they're actually done with this, when they do register for the lifeguard class, it's a breeze for them. Along with that, they learn how to do the basics with recreation such as arts and crafts, activities, field trips, and so forth. And that's possible because our swim camp is also held at the same time. So they have the opportunity to work with the kids, teach them how to swim, take them on field trips, lead games and activities, and so forth. Now, the after-school swim club volunteer, this program is slightly a little bit limited. The after-school program is offered daily for our youth, but the volunteers, we only pick four every year to assist with homework, teach lessons, and so forth. And then usually, this is where we actually take people who, you don't need to learn how to swim to be an after-school swim club volunteer, you just need to be able to work with the kids, willing to learn, willing to develop. And at the same time though, we do teach those volunteers how to swim, so they feel comfortable like, you know, joining the kids in activities in the water. In regards to numbers, it's not as big as our VOP program, which you guys been presented, I think, a month ago, but our swim aid number, as you guys can see, 2016, 17, 18, our average is around 15. 2018 is not over, so, and usually around fall, we get a huge amount of people who come in and take the swim aid program. The guard start has been growing slowly, it's, as you notice, it's grown from 14 to 35 since 2016 to now to 2018. And our swim club volunteer, again, we only take four, just because of the fact that the program is limited to only 40, 40 students, and so we want to make sure that ratio is there, you know, one, with our staff members of four and then four volunteers, it's, it's a good amount ratio. You know? The benefits, again, it's development for the teens, particularly their social skills, confidence, decision-making, and so forth. The variety of opportunities at the pool, there is a lot. Though it is highly focused on swimming, we still leave that portion where they have the opportunity to learn more about the recreation field. Furthermore, just like the VOP program, what our program does, it actually, it is a farm system at the same time. It's teaching them how to become potential part-time staff, that's what it is doing. I, we wanted to make sure people were able to come and give you testimodios, but unfortunately that was impossible, it's a school night, everybody's in school, or they're actually working right now. So we did a small video, let me just go turn it on quickly.
My name is Irene, I'm fifteen years old. I attended after school program. At the after school program, I helped volunteers walk kids up the hill. Also, I got to help, help kids with homework. There's lessons between homework time where kids swim, divided by levels. I got to teach them freestyle, backstroke, breaststroke, butterfly, and also diving. Outside the pool, I learned how to become a more sociable and, sociable person, and to communicate with other people outside of work.
I'm Michael Leon, I'm sixteen years old, and I've worked in the after school program. In the after school program, I would pick up the kids from the school, bring them over to the pool, and then I would usually help them out with homework if they ever needed help. If they had problems, I would help them out a little bit, because a lot of kids have some problems at school, with friends and stuff. And we'd always have fun activities planned for them. After that, we'd have some extra time to do some swimming. I'd teach them how to swim, I would guard for them, and we'd just have a good time in general. In volunteering, I learned to be more patient with kids. If they ever had a conflict, I would consider all sides of the problem before solving it. And overall, it helped me become a better person socially, and it helped me develop more of my, um, skills to like, take the initiative whenever it was needed.
My name is Lexus, I'm fifteen years old, and I worked swim aid, guard start, and lifeguarding course. Um, for swim aid, I was with a staff member, and I helped the, uh, the lifeguard or staff member with the kids. I helped them, um, do kicking, strokes, even, um, showing examples of the strokes. I learned how to communicate better with people. And with, not just with kids, students, people in the outside world. Um, it really helped me connect and figure out how people usually work, and how to figure out like, personalities, or just, just how people interact with one another, and how I could interact with them. I really did enjoy it. Um, I found it very entertaining and fun, and I really like helping people, so the swim aid, the swim aid and everything really helped me. Really helped me with just learning how to help people better, and helping people, learning, teaching kids how to swim is really fun to me. Because I, I can give them a bunch of, uh, advice and examples of how I do better. Um, as an employee, it helped me, uh, learn and communicate better with just the staff members in general, and with the students, and real life, just with people in general. I did have trouble with communicating when I was younger, but now that I did swim aid and everything, it really helped me with communicating, so it's just, I can look at very many people in the staff system now.
Thank you for the video, Romeo.
No problem.
Great to listen to the youngsters and get their, their interpretation of what's, what's being presented to them, and, um, the feedback. And that's honest feedback, I tell you, so.
Nervous feedback.
No cue cards. Yeah, but thank you. And, um, anyone else, anything, any questions for Romeo that?
At the moment, no. The only thing I had a question was, how is the pool hours? Because I know most of the times when people, um, wanna go, they're normally closed.
So the pool for the entire summer, we are open, basically, from seven to nine during the whole entire summer, which is only eight weeks. Um, during the school year, we are basically open whenever the school is not in session. So for example, um, we're out of the pool prior to eight A M. in the morning. We have morning lap swim in the morning. And then as of three o'clock on the dot, we have programs running. Um, and that would be starting with aquatic swim club and D C D coming in at four o'clock, and we close at nine. So it's, it's, it's a big facility with a lot of programs going on as of right now.
So it's needing more space, more, um, pool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if Joseph's ever told you, but classes at G Mona Pool are ridiculously full.
Oh, I've seen it, I've seen it, I remember it, I've seen that.
It's funny how our staff call it like, on a registration on Tuesday, we call it Black Tuesday.
Yeah. Any updates on, going on at the, at the pool that, um, since it's opened up? Updates going on facility wise, or just program wise that's going on?
Um, in regards to the facility itself, um, the school district is working hard along with our staff in our city to make sure the pool is staying clean and whatnot. Um, the lessons itself, I think the only issue as of right now is staffing. Um, just because the fact that, you know, our staff members are more high school students and college students, and a lot of people are leaving Daily City during college and during high school. You have your limited hours and whatnot. It's hard to, it's, it's difficult to get those staff members to work till nine. We shouldn't be allowing them to work till nine.
Yeah.
So, yeah. But maybe, you know, in honesty, um, I know we had a presentation with D C D, maybe that's something it was looking for, a stronger partnership with D C D.
Alright, thank you. Okay. That's a, that's, that's a fantastic presentation, I mean, I can't get over, uh, just the conversation that you presented with the kids on that video, that speaks volumes right there. So thank you Romeo, thank you Daily City. On, on the next item on the director's report is the Parks and Open Space Master Plan. Yeah.
Commissioner Pastor, I just wanted to check in, this plan is probably gonna take about a year or so, um, and we're in the very beginning stages, but I thought I'd give you an update where we are right now, um, to refresh your memory. An outside organization called Gates and Associates has been awarded the contract to, uh, come up with the Parks Master Plan. I know Commissioner Luna went to the first meeting of the stakeholders group, and the second meeting of the stakeholders group just got scheduled, that's gonna be on September twelfth here at City Hall, downstairs between six thirty and eight thirty P. M. The latest, what I handed out this evening is one of the, uh, checks, their boxes that the consultant checked, and that is a phone survey. So this is brand spanking new data, and I apologize, the quality isn't that great. I'm gonna send you a link to this, so you can see it on your screen and blow it up in more detail. Uh, this was just completed, it was completed less than two weeks ago, the date on the cover is August fifteenth, two thousand eighteen. And Gates subcontracted the telephone survey to a group called Strategic Research Associates, and their goal was to reach four hundred Daily City residents, to ask them, it was a pretty detailed survey, I think there were about forty survey questions, um, and their goal is to get four hundred respondents, and they ended up with four hundred and five respondents, so they considered a statistically valid, uh, survey. And I'm, I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail, but I will say that, uh, of the respondents to the survey, they generally had very favorable, favorable views of Daily City. Most of the respondents felt that Daily City's parks were kind of right in the middle of what their expectations would be from visiting parks in other areas. The majority, though, did have a favorable, favorable opinion of Daily City's parks, which was good to hear, because I know sometimes we're a little bit hard on ourselves and our parks maintenance folks, and certainly, we always feel there's room for improvement, but it seems like, uh, the residents are pretty satisfied with the level of survey. Um, it was a nine-minute survey, so that's, we, we appreciate all the Daily City residents who took nine or ten minutes of their day to complete the forty questions. Um, I was gonna touch on some of the highlights here. There's forty questions worth of highlights, I don't know where to begin. There, there is a perception out there from some of the respondents that there is a barrier to, to using the parks. And surprising, a lot of the folks that live here don't use our parks for various reasons, and it depends, you know, some people that, that don't have kids or pets or, or reason to be in the parks, were willing to take the survey even though they didn't actually use the parks, I thought that was interesting, too. Um, others, they, they called out things that would make the parks more attractive to them. Lighting was, was a response they got quite a bit. Um, it's not so much an issue during the summer hours when we have longer daylight, but in, in the winter hours, some of our parks get pretty dark, and it's a little bit intimidating, and the park user to come after dusk. Some of them felt the need for more drinking fountains and other amenities. Um, you know, that's, it's an issue that comes up, and just anecdotally, I will let you know that, uh, there are no drinking fountains at Westlake Park, and the reason for that is that park is irrigated with, uh, recycled water. So there, there's state water regulations, you cannot have drinking water next to irrigation water that's coming from a recycled source, so. Once in a while, we'll get that question, how come there's no drinking fountains out there? There used to be in the old days, once they cut over to recycled water, those went away. Benches and trash cans were, were other common themes that came up. And then there were different constituents that wanted to get their voice heard. Uh, we certainly hear a lot from, uh, dog walkers. We don't have a lot of dog walking, walking facilities within our, our parks. Mission Hills has a small dog park area, and Palisades Park on the far western side of town. Um, there's been talk about maybe expanding that Mission Hills Park, making it bigger access out there. Um, so, we, certainly, we know for a fact, because Romeo, Denise and I work at Westlake Park, there's certainly no shortage of dog walkers using the park. And as you recall, a couple of years ago, we did change the Daily City ordinance, not too long ago, it was actually illegal to bring dogs into Daily City parks. That law was almost never enforced, so we got a little bit more reasonable about it, and welcome dogs in our parks, but wanna keep them on leashes just for the safety of the other people using the parks. We do have occasionally, uh, interactions between park users and off-leash dogs, and sometimes those don't end well. It's been about a year since our last major incident that way. So we certainly welcome dogs in our regular parks, but wanna keep them on, on leash. So some of the dog walking community wants their dog to run free. Certainly the most popular place in this part of the world is, uh, Fort Funston, heavily used dog, it's not in our jurisdiction, but I know a lot of Daily City folks bring their dogs there, too. That's kind of a, a quick overview of, of that. This is just a small component of a very large undertaking. Um, those of you who are at National Night Out may have noticed that the Gates folks had an informational table there, some of you there, um, and they were interacting with, uh, the community at that event. Um, I know Commissioner Luna saw the, the boards they have, where you can kind of go and vote what your preferences are for improvements to the parks, and they did that same setup out at the, uh, National Night Out there.
Yeah, I was at the Health and Safety Fair, and I know that they did that there, too.
Oh, yes, the Health and Safety Fair.
So it was nice to actually see people, um, actually like contributing, and, um, people have a lot, lot to say, so it was good.
And I believe they are coming to Latino Heritage and Casaya Han Sa Daily City, too, so.
Great.
Um, we're in the very, very beginning stages, we'll, we'll check in with you periodically, and it's great that, um, Commissioner Luna is part of the group. And I know, back when this all started off, Commissioner Wilcox, then Commissioner Wilcox was, also had volunteered, so I think they would welcome a second member of the commission if, if either of you wanna join Commissioner Luna, um, in the process. It's not very demanding, you know, two meetings and over the course of, what, three months or so?
Yeah.
And the meetings are about two hours, and they bring snacks and games. They try to keep it fun.
I'll join. I'll go to those meetings. And I know you've been in the corner, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so then I'll be the next one.
And I don't, because I'm not officially part of that group, I don't know if, if they've communicated to the group about the next meeting?
I don't think they have, so when you mentioned.
So I don't, I don't know that it's absolute, but I know the date they were looking for, for their next meeting is September twelfth, um, here in the basement, in City Hall.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll, I don't know if I'll bring it back every single month, but maybe every two or three months, we'll, we'll check in with the process for the Parks Master Plan.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
And I will also send you, um, this electronically, so that you can put it on your screen and blow it up, though, because some of, some of the print is, is really, really fine in the printed version, so. The beauty of having it electronically is you can blow that up and, and see the detail.
Yeah. We'll just increase the font a little bit. Alright, moving along to commissioners' reports, any, any items in the community that any one of our commissioners wanted to kinda like share with, uh, in this session? This one is, I wanna mention that, that just, this past weekend, they had the, uh, Love Not Hate event here at the Daily City, City Hall, and, um, I had a chance to, to visit and see all the different cultural festivities that were presented, and, uh, I know it was put together, as you say, in a flash, so to speak, but, um, job well done with, with those involved, Daily City and, and, um, the various, uh, groups that were participating. So thank you for making that a nice event for, for everyone to enjoy. Yeah. And, um, we have a couple announcements, I think Joe shared some of those in our, our early comments on our subject matters, previous subject matters this evening, but, uh, we had the Latino Heritage Month celebration happening on September fifteenth, so circle that date, and for the community, and that's a Saturday here at the, the City Hall Rotenda. So Latin Heritage Month, uh, September fifteenth this year, uh, running between twelve and three P. M. And, um, also, supporters of the Dojer Senior Center, they're having their Fall Festival on October seventh, Sunday, at the Dojer Senior Center, uh, in Dojer Cafe. And, uh, again, opening remarks will begin at ten A. M., but the event's running from eight thirty to one. And, um, let's see here, complimentary breakfast for all Dojer Senior Center members and guests and non-members, it's just a nominal five dollars to come in and partner up with your community. And also in, uh, October thirteenth, we have the Casaya Han Sa, Daily City Celebration, a Filipino event being held at Marchbanks Park on October thirteenth, Saturday, and it's running between eleven and A. M. and three P. M., and that is a free event, four P. M. Okay, I stand corrected, four P. M. Thank you. And, um, that said, that concludes the, um, announcements and communication, the upcoming dates to remind ourselves of.
I have a couple to add on.
Okay.
Things, too.
Go ahead.
Um, we talked about, that my colleagues and I in San Mateo County, who are the directors of the different Parks and Recreation Departments across the county, have come together, we've talked about this for over a year now, but we're gonna have a Parks and Recreation Commissioners Workshop on Saturday, October twentieth, from eight thirty to one P. M. in Belmont. And, uh, I know some of you have indicated an interest, and it's, it's time to commit now. So, um, I'm not gonna put you on the spot this evening, but, uh, I'll send out one more reminder and get a, a firm confirmation now that we know a little more detail about the event itself. Um, so that again, Saturday, October twentieth, down in Belmont. Two other things I wanted to mention tonight, uh, at the end of this week, two short days from today, we'll be saying goodbye to a longtime Daily City employee, over thirty years' service to the city, and the person who does all your minutes, Sarah Mendoza, is retiring after a beautiful thirty-year career here with the city of Daily City. So I wanna publicly acknowledge her contributions, especially to the Department of Library and Recreation Services, but I know throughout her thirty-year career, she's worked in public works, um, she worked directly for the library, and she worked in engineering, so she's, she's made the rounds, and a well-deserved retirement coming up for Sarah. And one other thing I wanted to mention, those of you who are frequent visitors to the Dojer Senior Center might be familiar with the area they call the Serenity Garden. And the landmark there is a dead tree that, that was carved, and it's, it's got different animals, there's a bear, a raccoon, and an eagle. That carving was done in two thousand seven, and in two thousand eighteen, it's got a very severe, um, termite issue. It was actually diagnosed a couple of years ago, the staff from the Parks Division have been eyeing it, and their last inspection last week, they determined it is a danger to leave that tree, if it fell down, it would crush a person or child. Um, so that will come down unceremoniously sometime within the next week or so, so if you wanna bid your farewells to the, to this, the tree carving. They will try to salvage parts of it. They will try to salvage parts of it, we don't have a plan how to display that, but they, they recognize there's some value in the carvings there, so they're gonna try and salvage that and maybe come up with a way to display that at some point in the future. That's what I have.
Okay. Wow. Well, just want to say congratulations on Sarah's retirement. Thank you for all your service, Sarah, for contributing to Daily City, it's great. You know, I'm excited to hear about the Serenity Garden tree, but, you know what?
Time marches on.
Yeah, time marches on, and a lot of memories watching that tree unfold, and being greeted by all the folks that have gone to the Dojer Center over there. But, without further ado, this concludes this evening's meeting.
I had one last thing before you hit that gavel. You, you mentioned the Love Not Hate event on Saturday, and I would be remiss if I didn't extend thanks to Leslie Pei from our department, or, excuse me, Leslie Debridge from our department, who actually was responsible probably for three-quarters of the entertainment that you saw on Saturday afternoon.
Great.
She was able to secure them on very short notice, so I know she's not here tonight, but I wanted to publicly thank Leslie for that.
Thank you, Leslie. Thank you, Leslie. And without further ado, as I mentioned, this concludes our evening's meeting. Do I have a motion to end this meeting?
Motion approved.
Okay, those in favor, do you say aye?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is now concluded. Thank you, everyone.